Welcome to the September 10th, 2020 meeting of the Town of Southampton Planning Board. In accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 202.1 and until further notice, all of the Board's meetings will be held remotely via video conference. So we ask the public to continually check the Town's website for updates and new information. Phil, can we get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finnerty.
Present.
Secretary Isier, Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Burke.
Present.
Board Member Laney.
Present.
And we're missing Mr. Zuccarelli. But we do have a quorum.
Thank you. So please join in for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have four public hearings this evening. We have applicants and members of the public standing in via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTA. Certain will be muting and holding speakers in a virtual waiting room until it's their time to give testimony before the Board. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking should state their name and address for the record. A further reminder that despite the Zoom environment, all comments should be directed to the Board and not to other participants. The link to participate in this meeting via Zoom can be found on the Town's website. This meeting is also being live streamed on the Town's website on the Town Clerk's Meeting Portal. If you have difficulty accessing the meeting, please visit the Town Clerk's Meeting Portal and click on the instructions link. Public comments can be made via Zoom, by email, or by uploading them to the Town Clerk's Portal on the Planning Board's page. You will see on that page a button you can click to upload your comments. Board members must recuse themselves, who must recuse themselves. From any application will state so on the record, and we will be removed from the meeting until the end of the meeting. Unless otherwise stated at the end of each hearing, these applications will remain open for a written comment period from the applicant and the public for 30 days. Those comments can also be made via email or by uploading your comments on the Town Clerk's Portal under the Planning Board's Meeting page. Additionally, in accordance with the Governor's order, these hearings will be recorded and transcribed and available to the public. So moving on, we will go to the first item.
Let's let the record reflect too. We now have seven in attendance on the Board.
Welcome, Zuccarelli. Let's go to the first item. Which is. Capin LLC.
Okay.
Anthony, really quick. Yes, Madam Chair, we do have notice. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good. I'll read the notice. And I put the aerial up. Please take notice that in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order number 202.1, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 10th, 2020, at 6:00 PM via video conferencing to consider the pre-application entitled Capin LLC. The application proposes a two-lot subdivision of a 42,073 square foot property, currently improved with a single-family residence and garage situated in the R-20 zoning district located at 8 Vale Avenue in East Quogue, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-315-3-30.1. A transcript of said hearing will be provided at a later date, and the public will have an opportunity to see and hear the meeting live and to provide comments. The public can watch the live meeting on the Town Clerk's website, under the Planning Board Meeting tab, or participate through the Zoom app. If any interested members of the public would like to provide comments on the public hearing, comments can be submitted to the Planning Board via mail, email, or uploaded to the Town Clerk's Portal prior to the meeting, where additional and updated information on ways to view and participate will be posted. In addition, the record will remain open after the public hearing for the submission of written comments. Please check the September 10th, 2020 meeting agenda posted on the Town Clerk's website as the hearing date approaches for further instructions on how to access the virtual meeting and for any updated information. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary.
Should I bring anyone in?
I believe Randall White brought us here, I believe.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hey, Randy.
How are you? Good to see you. Hope everybody's well.
Yes, we are.
We're so good.
Thank you.
Real quick, thanks for having me. I think you guys are doing a great job. I heard about the informal comment, so I'm not going to stand up, even though I've got a tie on. I won't stand up. That was Jackie's comment. I don't have my pajamas on. I'm just kidding. As Anthony had said, this is a rather large parcel in this area. To subdivide it into two half-acre parcels would be conforming with the neighborhood. We've already secured a variance for the proposed flagpole. We've already designed out an easement area pursuant to the East Quogue Fire District's request that we would have a 20-foot access in the event of any type of emergency situation. It's pretty straightforward. I'll take any questions that the Board members might have.
So just to clarify for the Board, they got relief to allow a 16-foot wide flag strip instead of 20 feet, but they accounted for the four additional feet by way of an easement, so that way they could have a total of 20 feet wide for the fire district.
That Suffolk County Water Authority being brought in?
Yeah, I'm sure there's water there, yeah.
And there's sufficient square footage on the flag. That's 22,072 square feet?
Yeah, that includes the flag strip, yeah.
Includes the flag.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board?
It looks pretty straightforward.
Okay, are there any, anyone from the public, Charles, that wishes to speak?
I don't know. No one has a hand up, so.
No one has a hand up, okay. So we'll close this public hearing then with a 30-day written comment period. Motion by Dennis, second by Phil, Glorian, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, seven in favor. Thank you. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you. Be safe, everybody.
Thanks, Randy.
Moving on to Setocca-Cove Estates. Kathleen, do we have notice?
We do, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Anthony. I'll read the notice. Please take notice that in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order number 202.1, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September 10th, 2020, at 6:00 PM via video conferencing to consider the final application entitled Setocca-Cove Estates. The final subdivision application of Setocca-Cove Estates consists of a four-lot planned residential development plan on a 7.396-acre parcel situated in the R-40 zoning district on the east side of South Bay Avenue and south of the Long Island Railroad tracks located at 10 South Bay Avenue in Eastport, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-352-1-10.1. A transcript of said hearing will be provided at a later date, and the public will have an opportunity to see and hear the meeting live and to provide comments. The public can watch the live meeting on the Town Clerk's website, under the Planning Board Meeting tab, or participate through the Zoom app. If any interested members of the public would like to provide comments on the public hearing, comments can be submitted to the Planning Board via mail, email, or uploaded to the Town Clerk's Portal prior to the meeting, where additional and updated information on ways to view and participate will be posted. In addition, the record will remain open after the public hearing for the submission of written comments. Please check the September 10th, 2020 meeting agenda posted on the Town Clerk's website as the hearing approaches for further instructions on how to access the virtual meeting and for any updated information. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary. And I believe Jim Walker from Intersciences is here, and I'm not sure if Tim McCully's here. I'll put up the map.
So the wetlands here take up a good swath of this property, Anthony?
Yeah, they have a pretty, a pretty big area of wetlands down here. Is Jim Walker here?
Yes.
Okay.
Just Intersciences.
Yep, that's good.
Sorry, sorry. This is a subdivision that was approved.
Can you just give us your name, please, and affiliation?
Jim Walker from Intersciences on behalf of Setocca-Cove Estates. You ready?
Yep.
Okay. This is a subdivision that was approved before, and we went back to the drawing board with some minor changes to the plan. We secured Suffolk County Department of Health Services approval, and all of the proposed law areas are outside of the wetlands setbacks, so that the property was designed to allow 20-foot-wide access down to the open space and 191,000 square foot open space is provided at East River. I believe this was agricultural piece, and all of the old parts of the East River are protected by a considerable easement. The two lots up front are 30,000 square feet, and lots three and lot three and lot four are 40,000-plus square feet in size. The project has been approved by the Health Department and is ready for final approval at the town. I'm here to answer any questions the Planning Board may have.
And the wetlands were last flagged, I think I'm seeing, December?
2017, yep.
I flagged them.
You did, so they're within the timeframe, right?
Yeah, well, it was referred to the Conservation Board under the pre-app, and they found the wetlands line to be accurate. The final application was referred to them, and we'll verify that it was accurate at this time as well.
So is that a pedestrian walkway, Jim, down into the open space?
Down to the water.
Is it an actual walkway or just a path, pathway?
It's just a path. Routinely, when you have a wetlands area, what you're allowed is a four-foot-wide grass path or a mulched path down to the water.
It doesn't have to be elevated at all, like an elevated boardwalk, narrow boardwalk?
No. The wetlands here are strictly frag-mighties. But in any case, an elevated walkway isn't typically provided in Chapter 325 Wetland Setbacks. Typically, what you have instead is either a grassed path or a mulched path down to the water.
So this path would be in the town. Are you proposing to dedicate the open space to the town?
Yes.
So this pathway would be a private pathway through town, open space? I'm not.
Again, it's an informal pathway, but it's really just going to be either grassed or mulched, four-foot wide down to the water. And yes, it is in the town. The town will own lot number five, which is 191,000 square feet.
So is any easement requirement there if it's going through town land?
I'm sure there'll have to be legal instruments that account for this. And what we'll do is we'll have further discussions prior to and during any approvals that we could discuss and hash out some of these design details. For example, they show here.
Thank you.
May.
Thank you for making it bigger, Anthony.
What's that?
Thank you for making it bigger.
No problem. They show, for example, a proposed 10-foot-wide pedestrian easement. And as Jim was just saying, usually our easements, when we have them through wetlands, account for a four-foot-wide or a five-foot-wide path, but not 10-foot-wide. So I think this would probably have to be amended on the final, you know, version. But that's just an example, you know, something that we'll have to discuss.
Are they going to construct this before the town takes title to that property? Or are they going to construct it after the town owns it? I'm trying to get a handle on the timing of this.
They're going to mow a path. And basically, a four-foot-wide path is typically allowed in the easement area. It is written into the easement language. And I'm sure Kathleen can advise you.
Four feet.
Four feet is fine.
Would, who will be this path? It will just be those four homeowners? I don't know what's north on the top of that.
Just the four property owners, yes. The public open space has a 20-foot-wide access along the MTA Long Island Railroad.
Okay. Thank you.
The path is just for the four property owners.
It's for the public, correct?
Yeah.
Well, I guess if you had parked on Bay Avenue, you could walk down.
Well, there's no path there. I'm trying to get my hands around the private path over the public space.
I hear you, Dennis.
So it's, I haven't seen, I've never seen anything like that.
Yeah, I'm going to have to, you know, I'll have to go through this with Kathleen. I'd actually initially thought, and it's actually written on the map here, to be dedicated to the town. I don't know. I initially thought it was going to be in a homeowners association, but so I'm not really sure how we'll deal with the access to the water. Might require some design changes to this.
Yeah, because this is final subdivision.
Yeah.
So.
Does that show on the pre-app report?
Yeah, I'm sure, you know, the issue of access was raised in some capacity. Probably talked about a four-foot-wide path. And at the time, you know, maybe it was that this area was going to be held in a homeowners association.
So you'll make note of that, Anthony, right, that we have to check?
Yeah, but we're going to have to have further discussions, I think.
Right. Are there any other?
That's a good point.
Because Diane DeLucien would like to speak?
Yep.
One moment.
Can we have the aerial one, so we can see where people are?
Sure. So here's South Bay Avenue is over here. The water's down here. Here's the Long Island Railroad.
It's just that one.
Yeah, it's a different direction.
Yeah. But thank you, that helps.
Good. Hi, Diana, you have comments or questions?
Is she unmuted?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Thanks for letting me join in. I have, my name is Diana DeLucia, and I live at 12 South Bay Avenue in Eastport. I've lived there, I don't know, 25 years or so. And I have the property that is just the one that's adjacent south to Setocca-Cove Estates. I just have a few questions. I'm kind of happy to see that they've left all this wetlands untouched, which is really great. And I love the idea that you're going to continue to allow the public to use it, because actually, it's not along the railroad that people go to. It's over behind my property, so a lot of people actually go to the north of my property. And then, I'm not sure, I never knew that they didn't actually own that causeway that is fronting to the creek, because there's a broken down, no, no, no. Go perpendicular where you are. Yeah, right there. Right there is where the water is, and there's a broken down old boat. But there's like a little broken bulkhead, and that's where, you know, people would go down and go clamming or fishing or put a canoe in. I always thought that the property owned that bulkhead that's falling apart. So now that I see that, I'm like, oh, so they, who owns that? Bulkhead part, like they've gone around that. I don't know if Mr. Canis owns that. I don't think so. So are they saying? Sorry?
Is it town-owned?
Um, I don't know. I'd have to.
Did you see how that jogs there at 565400? If you continue that and you go across, then you can see Mr. Canis's property starts. But I didn't, I always, Mr. Canis put up a fence further down. So I think there may be some, I don't know, confusion about who owns that piece.
So where is it? Culverts, loose way, bulkhead? You're talking that area?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, no big deal. I'm just curious. I was so surprised to see that Setocca-Cove's was not taking that property or didn't own that property. Because basically, like I said, you know, the town people will come in and walk their dogs, and they'll go down the back. But that's kind of the place where people will go, because that's where the water is. And it would be really nice if people could still do that. I mean, they can go through my yard, sure, but it was nice that they could also go north of my property. Along the railroad tracks, I guess if they clear it, because right now it's full of, you know, trees and bushes, and it's kind of a long walk, but that'd be okay. Just as long as, if we still have the access, because it really is an exceptionally rich place for egrets, herons. There's owls way back there in the wetlands, right behind my house in that area. Lot four has an owl in a tree there. So it's quite nice. So just kind of a question about that. I'm glad they're leaving public access. I think that's terrific. Let's see, and I guess of the bulkhead, they won't be expected to repair it then, because it's not their property. Because that thing is a complete disaster and falling into the creek, correct?
This portion is not sitting on their property, so I do not believe, you know, they're responsible to fix it.
But okay, it is included, Anthony. You've got the lines drawn.
But there's portions of a bulkhead that fall on their property, but I think that they, you know, would have the ability to, you know, deal with. But as to, you know, what's happening over here, I'll have to look at it a little bit.
What about the applicant?
Well, Jim's here. We could talk to Jim.
Do you have any, can you enlighten us on that, on the bulkhead?
All of that land and all of the wetlands are going to be given to the town. That bulkhead is in poor shape, and to pull a permit to repair a bulkhead in that poor of shape is not likelihood to be granted in any way, shape, or form. But that property is being given to the town, period.
Who owns it?
The town can access it. They can go down there all they want and enjoy the waterfront. It is an old duck farm, and that's where the ducks were raised.
Yep. It's our little bit of history. I do have one personal question about my property. As you can see, maybe not from this, but from the photograph, my house is jammed up on the northern border. I don't know why they ever, you know, divided, this was all, this land, my property and the land south of me was all one big piece. And they, it's a weird way to divide it, but you can see my house is like 10 feet from the property line. So I'm just asking the developer if you could take that under consideration in the lot that's right adjacent to mine, that, you know, I mean, the building envelope goes 20 feet from there. So I'd have, you know, it's like, most people are building, you know, very, very large homes, and they would be like looking into my bedroom, basically. So I'm just kind of asking if you could take that into consideration, if you could kind of open up that, you know, encourage them to build over to the north, and for accessory structures, the same thing, any swimming pools or whatever else, yeah.
Do we see a driveway, Jim, coming in there?
It's a common driveway for all four lots.
Okay, so the driveway on the left of Lot 1, it says driveway edge of lawn over here. Over further, Anthony.
Where, I'm, sorry, I'm.
It says driveway. Towards Bay Avenue, Anthony.
The top left-hand corner of Lot 1.
Hold on.
That's existing. That's actually where I parked my car, but it's on their property.
Yeah, that's an existing driveway. The common driveway is coming down the middle here and serving all four lots.
All right, so that driveway will be closed off. Maybe they can put some buffering there with foliage.
Yeah.
You know, and just a 10-foot area of buffer.
Now, we'll, we'll look at, you know, the comments. One thing we could do, for example, is, you know, it's a cluster plan. So the Planning Board could set the setbacks, but for example, they show the 20-foot setback over here, side yard, which is the minimum, I'm guessing. And then they show the 25 on this side. We could always switch it. We could make the bigger setback on this side and have to do the smaller setback over here to try to maximize the setbacks from the, you know, the house. So, you know, there's a few things that we could do, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question, Diana. Diana, before you leave, can I ask you a question?
Of course.
What is the area along the railroad? Right now, the only access to public open spaces along the railroad tracks, that strip. What is that area like? Is that all wetlands or?
No, 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 not at all. It's not wetlands down to the end of Lot 3. It's just, it's overgrown with bushes and, yeah, mostly bushes and long grass. I mean, no one would ever go down there, because it's, you know, 10 feet, 12 feet high. That's never used. Like I said, they, people go either along my property, like right behind my house there. It's just kind of clear, because they're going down by the water. So that's kind of along the railroads, out of the way. But if they would be kind enough to maybe take down some foliage so it was obvious, then people would use it. But otherwise, it will appear to the public that they can no longer go.
Well, that would have to be would have to be maintained regularly. So clearing it once is really of no value unless some entity is willing to clear it regularly.
Yeah. Well, if they put it along my property, I would clear it. You know, if they put it right north of my property and zigzag along my, I guess, right now I mow all the way down to the water. I've been mowing it for 25 years, whole, like 10-foot-wide pathway down to the water. That's how everybody can get down there. I mow it, because it's really nice to have.
Problem is, the problem is, once you start, once there, once you stop mowing, and there's a new property owner there, that all that area will be overgrown.
Well, actually, it looks like I can still mow, because that property is going to be town property. And if you don't mind me mowing, I'll continue mowing the path to the water.
Would you be willing to mow along the railroad tracks if we got it cleared?
No, there's trees there. There's like, you know, it's like, yeah, it's overgrown for.
See, right now, that's the only access. Otherwise, public access is going to be cut off if the map is approved. You see the map?
But, but, sir, if you could look at the far left, and I could be mistaken, but my property is that sort of like zigzag one, and it looks, that little jug handle down there, looks like it just hits where it's town property.
Right at the end of Lot 4, yeah.
Yeah, I'm seeing clearly. And that's exactly where I mow the path, right at that corner. I go along my property line and I go straight down to the causeway.
People would have to literally be walking across your property to get to that.
Well, you know, they already, I mean, you know, certainly, the neighbors that I know do, because since I have a nice yard, you know, you could just walk down the grass. On the other side, it's deep, so I don't know what you do about the other folks. I think probably our neighbor that's going to speak next may have some perspective on that. You know, people come off dogs and all that, but you know. You know, people come off dogs and all that, but you know, I know it's these people's property. We don't have a right to it. We're just trying to, you know, ask for anything we can still enjoy.
This is the time to ask for it. Good point.
Okay, Diana, thank you. Is there someone else pushing to speak?
Charles, there's a Beth Fabry who would like to speak.
She's in already.
Okay.
Hi, how are you? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for having me. Hi Diana. I am literally sitting across the street. I am 11 South Bay Avenue, uh, Eastport. So I am the lot, uh, that shows the very tiny house there right against, uh, so one over, no pool. Uh, nope, other direction. Uh, yep, right there. So, uh, that is me. My husband and I bought the property, uh, three years ago. I guess this August, um, and have done a tremendous amount of work. So, um, we have a lot of, or a lot of questions as well. Because as I sit on my front porch, we will be looking at this property. Um, and right now, obviously there's a lot of beautiful trees. So I have a couple of questions, especially as it's been presented. Uh, I believe in the initial presentation before we got to this stage in the last public, uh, hearing, the acres were slotted, uh, the, the lots were slated to be, uh, one acre each. And now based on my quick math, at 30,000 square feet, that is, uh, less than an acre, point six. So I'm just curious why that change was made.
Well, I think it's a cluster, Anthony, are you there?
Yes, it's a cluster plan. So what happens is, uh, we get a yield map that shows lots that conform with the one acre zoning requirement. This is a one acre zone. Uh, so you have to show how many one acre lots you could get here. Uh, in this case, uh, they were able to get four one acre lots. Uh, and then the planning board opted, uh, to, uh, require, uh, a certain percentage, 25% be set as high as open space. Uh, and as a result of doing that, uh, the lots then become smaller, uh, than what the zoning requires in exchange for that open space. So,
Understood.
The density is based on one acre, uh, but the lots themselves are smaller to accommodate the open space.
So I'm also curious, um, and I think there's been a couple of conversations around this. Uh, the driveway, uh, appears as planned. It would be directly across from again where my house is situated. Um, and I'm not, I'm not a planning expert like all of you are. But if I can look on the screen enough, it looks like the entry for those four homes would be directly across, uh, where, you know, my home sits and, and my front porch. So I'm curious without an HOA, which it sounds like based on this conversation, there would be no HOA. Then what is the commitment on the developer or the homeowners, uh, to make sure that there were plantings at the beginning of that driveway? Or that somehow, you know, it was maintained. So what we're looking at now is a really, you know, um, as Diana spoke, there's a ton of, right, I see eagles, I see owls, I see deer. Um, but you know, am I going to be staring at homes or is there some commitment, um, on the part of the developer? Especially with lack of an HOA for some sort of maintenance and trees, et cetera.
So you're, you're, you're looking at like a buffer of trees.
Exactly, like a buffer of trees.
Across the front.
Right. Because if you were to look at it now and understanding, um, uh, you know, Diana knows it well. But it, uh, there's a lot of mature trees and foliage and certainly some that needs to be cleaned up, no doubt. Um, but in terms of, you know, for, if there's going to be a lot of cutting to put up the homes and the driveway, uh, is it going to be bare or are there going to be, you know, um, at least newer trees planted? Or some sort of foliage to create a barrier?
Um, just, uh, you know, regarding your first question about, you know, the maintenance and all that, because there's no homeowners association. Uh, we are going to require, um, a common driveway and utility easement. Uh, and that easement, uh, spells out the maintenance requirements, um, for the four property owners within the subdivision. So the, uh, you know, the, the maintenance, uh, of the common driveway will, will be included. And there'll be legal documents for it, uh, regarding, um, you know, you're right here across the street. So, uh, you're right, the driveway is going to be right here and there's going to be two houses, uh, you know, sitting in the front. The planning board can consider, um, you know, buffer along the front. Um, there's some spotty, uh, trees here. Um, it's not a thick vegetation. Um, you're probably looking through and you probably see right through.
Yeah.
Old photo.
Yeah, no, it could be. This, this, this one might is, you know, 2018, 2019. Um, but the planning board could, uh, ask for a buffer. They could ask for trees to be put in. You know, based on the public comments that we get, you know, we'll certainly have that discussion with the board.
Sure. And I'm certainly, um, happy to ensure that other neighbors, again, I don't want to speak for Diana. But I think certainly if, uh, you know, we're going to be removing trees and whatnot, replacing them with some sort of buffer would be greatly appreciated for those of us that, um, have been working really hard to clean up our own properties. Um, and, and you know, working within the town and what we take down, trying to replace, et cetera. Um, I would hope the same from the new developer, um, so that we can all be good neighbors. Um, I also, um, you know, with regards to the railroad discussion, um, you know, I'm not sure that, you know, um, we want to encourage people walking along the railroad. I mean, as you all know, the L I double R, uh, notwithstanding COVID, uh, still, as someone who lives right here, uh, is on a very frequent schedule. Um, so I would just echo, uh, Diana's comments that unless the developer were to create a safe path that frankly took down some of the foliage and really made it safe. I would just be concerned with safety. This is a road that, um, because of, um, the cove at the end of the street, there's bikers, walkers and children all day long up and down the street. Um, and so again, i- if we're kind of in some ways encouraging them to walk around the railroad, certainly as someone who has property along the railroad, not opposed, but would just want to make sure that the developers take your, the city, whomever the appropriate parties are, are taking that into account and creating sort of s- some sort of more, uh, safe access, given the speed and rate and frequency of which the trains go by. Um, and, and then my last questions are really just around, um, the street and the intersection of Montauk Highway and South Bay. So for those of you who are familiar, there's a large, uh, bus barn on the corner. So this is Montauk Highway, obviously, and then South Bay. As I previously stated, there's a restaurant at the end of our street as well as a marina. Both are very well trafficked, trafficked, did, sorry. Um, both are the public restaurant as well as the marina. The marina has continued to expand. Um, so the number of cars and pedestrian traffic down the street, and there's no, you know, sort of sidewalk or, or whatnot. Um, the bus barn also on the corner, and I don't think this picture shows the Montauk Highway corner. But the building comes to a point right at Montauk Highway in South Bay. So literally to make the turn on South Bay from Montauk Highway, um, if you're coming from the town of Eastport, um, you have to slow down to, you know, five miles an hour to make the right turn. Otherwise you hit the building. My point in all this is to say, I'm certainly not opposed to these four homes if absolutely care was given, um, to the river and care is given to creating some sort of visual barrier. But I am concerned about the number of additional homes we're adding to the street on an already busy trafficked street. And so I would just ask the town to consider the planning board and I'm not sure whether it's in your purview. Can we put in speed bumps? Can we lower the speed limit? It's currently 30. I think that's too high. And I do think at some point the town needs to consider some sort of pedestrian crossing at Montauk Highway in between South Bay and North Bay. I'm not seeing a traffic light, but you know, one of those light up crossing the street. Um, you know, when you cross it or there's, um, you know, on the crosswalk, i- it flashes. It's, um, and, and look, I'm trying to find the silver lining in COVID. The good news is the number of kids biking, walking, jogging down the street has increased tenfold and Diana I'm sure could speak to that. But so has the boat traffic and the restaurant traffic and, um, it's, it's becoming really dangerous. So, uh, you know, larger issue, but with adding four more homes, uh, I would just really encourage the town to lower the speed limit and to look at a crosswalk with some sort of light that, you know, maybe could be offset by the developer adding these four homes.
Okay, we'll take a look at the traffic.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And, um, is there anyone else in the, Anthony, do you have anyone else speaking?
Um, but that I'm aware of, um, but we'll ask Charles.
I don't see, one second. I don't see any other hands.
Okay, so you have now 30 days. We're going to close this with a 30 day comment period. So you could get your comments in, direct them to the planning board and any other neighbors who couldn't make this meeting.
Jackie?
Yeah.
So ask the, the developer to, to, um, um, there's two things I'm concerned of from what I'm hearing here. One is that bulkhead and what, wondering whether that's under the jurisdiction of the trustees. Um.
Jim, are you there?
Okay, it is definitely under the jurisdiction of the trustees and moreover, it's in the town of Southampton property. Uh, you're talking about the, the small bulkhead where people go down and sit on chairs.
Yeah.
Old weir from the duck farm. Uh, it keeps the water in the pond higher than in the, uh, estuary down below it. And that, that property belongs to the town of Southampton. It's below high water. Except for the bulkhead and the bulkhead, as I said earlier, is in very poor shape. And it's never going to be fixed. It's going to be something that reverts back to nature and that's what you should expect. Uh, the nice little path down to the water can stay and it's all located within the, uh, open space. Um, and they can have a nice trail, uh, maintained by the town along, uh, along the, uh, north property line and continue to access the waterfront down there and uh, encourage people to continue the open space part of this property as they always did. I don't expect anybody's going to maintain bulkheads, uh, down.
Are you saying, because it sounds like the public uses that bulkhead area. And you're suggesting that who is, and I, I asked the same question Dennis asked. Who is putting in the walkway and maintaining the walkway along the Long Island Railroad to give the public the access?
It's deeded to the town.
You're going to deed that to the town with the town having the responsibility then to give the public access to that property?
Right. The, the town generally, uh, maintains and, uh, initiates trails on open space parcels all through the town and they can continue to do it on this piece of property.
I
1,000 square feet, uh, to occupy and, uh, use for the general public.
Um, I, I just like to comment on that as the former president of Southampton Trails Preservation Society. In rare, rare, rare instances, does the town build and maintain trails? They're done by a volunteer organization. And right now that volunteer organization is like 80 years old. I mean, not the organization. Um, so the, all the CPF lands that have trails on them, that's all vol- almost all volunteers with just a little bit of help from the CPF staff.
Uh, I am certain that if you, uh, want to, uh, have an offer from the property owner to cut a suitable path along that, uh, north property line, that it would be more than fair to ask him to do it. Um, I, I think it would be easy. The trees are very small. They could be mulched in place and the most could, uh, start a, a trail for the town of Southampton to use.
So now we're talking about an easement to the benefit of the town that'll be maintained by the property owners?
Robin, that's a piece of property being given to the town, period. It's being deeded to the town. It's going to be the town property. Uh, property owner owns it now and if, if you want, he could install a, a suitable hiking trail down that, that north property line to help, uh, the town, uh, deal with, uh, management of the open space that they're going to own.
And the other side that the public has been using right now, that would just go away.
Well, that's this woman's private property.
Yeah, I'm saying, well, yeah, but we're not giving, I don't know whether we can get an easement on, on the developer's side for a trail to continue to be able to use that bulkhead. I'm just
You want to see the solution?
Go ahead.
Anthony, pull up, can you pull up the map again?
Sure.
One and four get their own common driveway. Two and three get their own common driveway and we leave a four foot strip between the two dog links to connect with their four foot walkway. Problem solved.
Whoa.
And Dennis? Morning, say it again.
One and four get their own common driveway. Two and three get their own common driveway.
Like flag.
And in between the two common driveways is a four foot public access strip.
Right down the center.
Right down the center, which links up, which links up to their, um, to their strip that goes down.
So there'd be two flag lots essentially.
Yeah, well, there are two flag lots, so there'd be two driveways.
Well, that's a possibility.
I like that, Dennis.
That's where, that's very, that's very close to what the community's been using anyway.
How about that, Jim? You'd have to take that back to your client, right?
Actually, I, I think putting a public path down the middle of four lots is a mistake in, in planning. We don't do that. However, if, if that's something the planning board wants to entertain, I think that's fine. Um, I think, uh, having, having the, uh, subdivider install a trail down the north side of the property, uh, connected that old trail that's been historically used would accomplish the same thing without changing the map. There is a lot of, uh, constraint on those four lots in terms of separation to people's wells. And doing, uh, changes to lots, it, it may be a little bit more involved than Dennis is suggesting. Um, but I, I think within the next 30 days that Anthony Treza, myself and the planning board can communicate will resolve, uh, the issue to the best of, uh, everybody's ability.
Just, just to clarify, when you say the north side, Anthony, can you just run your, but that's the railroad right of way?
No. That's a strip that leads to the open space. And they're willing to cut a trail down there.
Oh, okay. All right.
A, a path, uh, through a wooded portion of the property could be ve- very attractive and attached attached to the old path that's been used by the property owners. Um, I don't really see where that's a hardship. Putting a public path down the middle of four lots is a little sketchy. We don't see that happen often. I don't think that it's in, in the best interest of everybody involved. Um, but asking for a path to connect to the old path, that's a, a simple thing. It's all in the town, uh, own property. And I don't, I don't expect it would do anything except create a nice little nature trail for people to walk. I think it, I think it would be fine.
I guess I'm just confused where the old path is. Anthony, can you tell us where the old path is, please?
It shows on the air photo.
I, it's hard.
It's hard, well, let me.
Down by the blue, Anthony.
Oh, I see it. See where the blue thing ends? You can see, you can see the remnants of that path.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah.
And it goes up across the top of it.
We don't normally put a path in the wetlands, but we can run a path right alongside the wetlands. For instance, a lot of times at Southampton Town Conservation Board, we have a nice little path through the wetlands buffer. And what it does is it gives people a place to walk. Uh, it's generally a nice thing.
Hey Jim, since the path is existing there, is there any opportunity to shift the lot like lot one? Over a little bit to, to allow for
for a different reason. We shifted lots around because people have wells in this area and we have to provide proper separation distance to the adjoining property lines. It's hard to move lot one and four at all.
Okay.
And I really think instead it might be better for the planning board, for the town of Southampton and for the neighbors to have a nice reliable path al- along the north property line, which connects across, uh, a conservation easement area that's never going to be um, developed and connected to the old trail. And that's probably a nice, easy thing to do. Property owner could do it. It bulged the path and, uh, I think that would resolve the
That would work too. Work it out.
Okay, at least there are alternatives here. So
Excellent.
We've heard the neighbors and thank you, Jim. Uh, any other comments before we close with a 30 day written comment period? Can I have a moment to close of the 30 day written comment period by Dennis, second by Robin? All in favor?
Aye.
Close extension? All those extensions?
Thanks, the neighbors are coming down.
Yes.
Beautiful spot there.
Bye bye.
Send in your comments.
Write, write a letter.
Okay, we're moving on to number three, Steven D'Angelo.
Yep.
Do we have?
I like hanging out with you guys, but I don't think you are here. I will shut myself off. I don't know.
There's a little. Like that.
Okay, okay, so.
There you go. Good. Okay, um, Steven D'Angelo.
We have proper notice, Madam Chair.
We do, fine. Anthony, you want to read that?
I'll read it for you. Please take notice that in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order Number 202.1, a pre-submission conference will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September tenth, twenty twenty at six PM via video conferencing to consider the pre-submission application entitled Steven D'Angelo. Site plan proposes the construction of a one thousand six hundred and eighty square foot storage building on a property currently improved with a one-story building and associated parking to be used for a proposed hardware store situated in the Hamlet Commercial Zoning District, located at fourteen eleven North Sea Road, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash nine five dash one dash nineteen. A transcript of said hearing will be provided at a later date and the public will have an opportunity to see and hear the meeting live and to provide comments. Public can watch the live meeting on the Town Clerk's website under the Planning Board Meeting tab or participate through the Zoom app. If any interested members of the public would like to provide comments on the public hearing, comments can be submitted to the Planning Board via mail, email, or uploaded to the Town Clerk's portal prior to the meeting where additional and updated information on ways to view and participate will be posted. In addition, the record will remain open after the public hearing for the submission of written comments. Please check the September tenth, twenty twenty meeting agenda posted on the Town Clerk's website as the hearing date approaches for further instructions on how to access the virtual meeting and for any updated information. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Phillips to Keith, Secretary. Map here. I believe Steven D'Angelo was here.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, it's all yours.
Um, I've never done this before, so forgive me.
So just give us an overview of what you're doing.
Okay, so it's a forty by eighty Morton building, which is essentially a, a storage shed. It will not receive electric, mechanicals, heating or plumbing of any nature. I need this to essentially be able to run a hardware store in the sense of storing seasonal items. For example, like right now, I'd be putting barbecue grills, chase lounges, umbrellas, beach shares, that kind of thing away. And then taking out things like snow shovels, sleds, things that we use during the winter time. And it also enables me to be competitive in the marketplace when I do my spring buys. So I would go to a show now and buy all the shovels and rakes, that sort of thing that you buy in bulk for the season, for the spring. Right now, you know, the building in place isn't going to be big enough to do that. And that's kind of why I need just an unconditioned shed, that, that's all this is.
For storage?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just have one comment. Anthony, when you read the notice, it said proposed store. It's open for business.
Absolutely.
Oh, it is open. Just so you know, I'm glad you said that actually, because prior to this, the, the storage building coming in for site plan approval, there was a question, they wanted to open up the hardware store. The hardware store use was a permitted use in that building, it didn't require any additional parking. So they didn't need any approvals from this board to actually do that. So I'm glad that you said that they're open, but they do need the site plan approval now to have the storage building for the, for the thing. So thank you for that.
Separate animal, okay. So this is simply storage, there's no retail sales out of this at all?
Oh, absolutely not, no.
And what's this, what's the footprint of it?
Forty by eighty, it's the shaded in area there.
It's one thousand six hundred and eighty square feet.
Right.
You know, the only issue, Jackie, is that we'll, you know, and we'll get comments, we'll address them in the, the pre-submission is, is the setback from the wetlands, you know, there, there is a wetlands back here. And, you know, so we'll, we'll have to look at that.
And that was flagged, you guys did flag that and I'm having a survey done actually tomorrow to put that on, a survey for you.
It was re-flagged, you mean?
Yes, you guys, yeah, Southampton Town flagged it a couple of weeks ago and my survey is going there tomorrow.
So do we need a hundred feet, Anthony, from?
Yeah, I believe, I believe the, you know, the, under the code, the requirement is a minimum of a hundred feet.
So you may have to move that storage building in.
Well, then I would lose parking and that, that's kind of where I'm seeking relief. Right now I have fifty feet according to a flag that was done like, I don't know, twenty years ago or so, the wetlands being flagged. Or I, I downsize the shed or move it somewhere else on the property. Like I, I can move it further, closer to that, 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 I guess crooked line of the property line, but it's not really going to work too well there and you're right against the neighbor's property. It's, you know, best positioned where it is now. Because that's a residential, you know, that's a house just beyond heading up of that. If I moved it closer to that, I, I just thought that where it is proposed now kind of works for everybody involved, the neighbors.
Do we need a hundred foot setback for parking also, Anthony?
Well, the parking lot is existing, actually.
No, but if you flipped that, move the building in, move the, move this row of parks.
Well, I could look at that.
Yeah.
I could look at that, because like I said, we're going to do a pre-submission conference report. So we'll, we'll outline any potential alternatives.
And we'll see what the new flagging of the wetlands comes as.
No, yeah, that'll be good, I'd be curious to see that.
Yeah. Anything else, Mr. D'Angelo?
Um, that's the summation of it, as simple as it sounds, that's, it's all I'm looking for.
Okay. Is there anybody who is in the public who's speaking to this application? Charles, anybody there?
I don't see any hands.
Okay, so may I have a motion to close this with a thirty day written comment period? Motion by Zuccarelli, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
All those extensions, seven in favor. Moving on to number four, the old file map, Ocean View Park. Jackie, that's you, do we have?
We have proper notice, Madam Chair.
We do, great.
Anyone to bring it?
Yeah, it should be Blair Gaza again.
Okay.
Thank you, alright, I'll read the notice. Notice of a public hearing, please take notice that in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order Number 202.1, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, September tenth, two thousand twenty at six PM via video conferencing to consider the old file map entitled Ocean View Park Map Five Fifty-nine Part One. The application is to amend an open old file map development section pursuant to Chapter Two Forty-three Old File Maps of the Town Code, located within the CR two hundred zoning district and the Aqua for Protection overlay district and the old file map overlay district on the north side of Edge of Woods Road, approximately two hundred feet east of the intersection with David White's Lane in the unincorporated Hamlet of North Sea, Town of Southampton, Suffolk County, New York. Suffolk County Tax Map Numbers nine hundred dash ninety-nine dash two dash twenty-one point five, twenty-six point four, thirty point one, thirty-nine point one, forty-five point two, forty-six point one, forty-nine point two, fifty-one point two, and fifty-five point one. A transcript of said hearing will be provided at a later date and the public will have an opportunity to see and hear the meeting live and provide comments. The public can watch the live meetings on the Town Clerk's website under the Planning Board's Meeting tab or participate through the Zoom app. If any interested member of the public would like to provide comments on the public hearing, comments can be submitted to the Planning Board via mail, email, or uploaded to the Town Clerk's portal prior to the meeting where additional and updated information on ways to view and participate will be posted. In addition, the record will be, remain open. After the public hearing for the submission of written comments, please check the September tenth, two thousand twenty meeting agenda posted on the Town Clerk's website as the hearing date approaches for further instructions on how to access the virtual meeting and for any updated information. In the event of a cancellation of this meeting, this application without further notice will be heard at the next Planning Board meeting. Jackie LaFaro, Chairperson and Board, by order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Philip Keith, Secretary. And I will.
Blair and Joe.
Good evening, Board members, council.
Jackie.
All I can say is your promise is Blair and we get Joe. Good together.
Did you want to give an overview here?
Well, I'll, I'll pull up the maps. So this is an aerial of the development and it's highlighted in that aqua blue. And here is the map, which shows the amendments being requested with the shorter road and the S shape and bringing out the entrance to the road to here with a better line of sight. And this is the surrounding area, just so you have an idea of the property configuration. And this is David White's Road, which comes from the south. And this is a zoom in of the tax map provided. So I'll go back to the aerial for now. Joe, did you want to make a brief presentation?
Yeah, there, there must be something wrong with the screen because I don't, I don't see any hair on the top of my head. Something's wrong with the screen.
Photoshop it.
All right, well, I'm, I'm very pleased to have my daughter Blair assisting me. Otherwise, I would never be able to appear before you this evening. I am Joseph Gaza of Fiibogden Lane Quag and I am appearing on behalf of Marla Schwank and Ken Wright, who are the co-owners of this little development on Edge of Woods Road, which is a combination of old filed map lots on four old filed maps that the Planning Board has been helping Marla and I with for over twelve years in creating eight buildable lots, which has been approved by the Planning Board on two prior occasions back in August eighth of two thousand eighteen, no, two thousand eight and September fourteen of two thousand seventeen. So we, we have an approved map, created eight lots, they're about an acre and a half each average. They're in a five acre zone and we have preserved twenty-eight acres of land in the area that's most important for preservation, north of the power lines that ties in with other town-owned land and also preserved. So we're, we have a beautiful map, I believe, and nice looking shaped lots. And we got rid of all the old filed map streets. We eliminated over four thousand linear feet of paper roads. And we've reduced it down now to our proposal this evening, which is just four hundred and fifty feet of road. It, it shortens the, the road from nine hundred and fifty feet that was originally proposed that went all the way up to the power lines. And we're proposing to replace the, the northerly four hundred and fifty feet of road with just some common driveway for the three lots that will need it. So we can save on the road, save on the disruption of the land, save on the topography. We won't have to tear apart that hill up on top. And we can build a little curve in the road where it intersects Edge of Woods Road, which will be aesthetically pleasing for this little map. And it will also satisfy Ms. Fenton, our town engineer, who's very concerned about the site distance when travelers pass on the road and reach the edge of Woods Road and looking to the east, the visibility would be less if the road were at its original approved location, which is just a straight line of Broadway. So by shifting it just sixty feet, it improves the site distance, puts a curve in the road so you don't look down an alleyway of blacktop. And we, we save some trees and get away with the, a little bit shorter road. We will be putting a public water line underneath that road with a fire hydrant at the end of the four hundred and fifty foot road to have fire protection for the area. And all the utilities will be underground and I'm sure that these lots are going to be very valuable lots for people who want to live in this most beautiful area. I just wish I owned more, but Marla Schwank has three and Ken Wright has one and I do have four myself. So that's, that's the case. We're hoping that the board will look favorably upon this and that there would be no public opposition to making a shorter, better road. And also that if there's no opposition this evening, maybe we could shorten the comment period so that we can hopefully get this map finished up. Maybe the ten days or fifteen days rather than the thirty days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Still going to be private though, right? It's, it's an old file map road, it's not going to be dedicated to town, is it?
It's going to have a private status, however, there will be a fifty foot width dedicated to the town. Or in the future, if the town chooses to accept it, that's up to the town. But it'll be maintained and it will be private for the eight lots.
And you're going to construct it right away or are you going to do it through two eighty-eight?
Uh, I think we're going to construct it right away.
Okay.
I have a road plan that was only finished by Bob Smith today. And I will be submitting that for Jackie's file tomorrow. And it's, it's a private road, it's twenty feet wide, it's, I'd like to, I'd like to get it started, like to make it attractive so that the lots are completed, saleable and accessible.
Joe, lot number five is obviously a strange shape. What, what does it diminish, where would the house be?
The, there is a building envelope up on the, right where the little, yeah, right where the hit, a little bit, that's it, right in that area would be the building envelope. It is a strange shape, it's the way the map is. I did reach out to the neighbor to the west. Okay, and I had, I'd written him a letter and I said, look, I said, why don't we juxtaposition your lot with my lot, or Marla Schwank's lot, Marla owns that lot. And, you know, maybe try to do something better. I asked for his input, I says, maybe we can do something a little, make the lot a little fatter and make your lot, you know, maybe have given more road furniture, if he wants more road furniture. Because with the building envelope on the north end of the lot five, that long narrow strip down on Edge of Woods Road is not really necessary. Because all the access comes in off of the Broadway that we're proposing to, to improve. That will be the only access for this map to the Edge of Woods Road. But the neighbor hasn't responded. I guess he's not interested in negotiating.
What's the, what's the square footage on that lot?
About an, let me look up my map here. Let's see. Lot number five is, it's one acre, forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. I don't know if you can see my map.
No.
Oh, we can do it, this, see, the building envelope would be up over here.
Yeah, I, I would assume it would have to be because how narrow is that? Yeah.
Narrow down the bottom.
The road frontage is what?
Eighty feet.
Yeah.
It's, it's to this area, you know, it's, it's going to add to the, the appearance of the, the rural nature of Edge of Woods Road. Because nobody's going to build in the front, it's just going to remain woods. It'll be nice.
Nice, yeah.
House will be in the back. I just thought that if I could cut off this, and I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of Marla now, I don't know if she's a hundred percent for this, but we did talk about it. I said, you know, if we could give some of this to the neighbor and he could give some of this in the back, it would make this lot a better lot. But he hasn't responded. I reached out to him and no response.
Window's always open.
Yeah, it's open and I'm sure that Marla would like to see this lot a little deeper for a better building envelope. And she's very accommodating and I'm sure she could work something out with them, if he had interest. We keep trying, I always try.
We know you do, Joe.
Yes.
Are there any other questions for Joe? So hearing now, we're going to close this with a thirty day written comment. So hearing out, we're gonna close this with a thirty day written comment period.
Jackie, anyone in the audience? Yeah.
Anyone in the public?
Oh, sorry, anyone in the public?
I see no hands.
Uh, yeah, I thought it was empty. Yeah.
Anything for less than thirty days, maybe?
It's the new, it's the governor's, um.
Yeah, they don't, they took that discretion away. Okay.
Charles, if I may, I think there was a Tina Brew in the house. Does she not want to be heard?
Um, I, I, she is in the house. Let's see. I'm bringing her in. Cause Marla Schwank is in the house too.
Who's Tina Brew?
Is she for this application, Kathleen?
No, I have nothing for this. Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
You are always welcome.
So I don't think Marla wants to speak, right?
She could just say hi.
Marla.
I, I know that Marla is, is anxious to bring this back.
Before her birthday or after her birthday.
Which birthday is that?
Oh, now, Joe, you don't ask that.
I think she actually admitted, but I don't remember.
Well, I think she did.
Always twenty-nine, right?
Always twenty-nine.
Marla, if you don't want to speak, that's okay. We're gonna close it. Close it with a thirty day written comment period.
Okay, great.
Great. Okay, so gonna have a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria and second by Phil. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, seven in favor. Thank you very much. It is on its way. Thank you, staff. Motion, George. Motion by Dennis, second by Phil. All in favor?